Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you so much for joining us in our virtual town hall. My name is Jenny Lacos Caputo. I'm the Executive Director of Communications and Community Relations for Round Rock ISD. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on what on-campus instruction will look like at the elementary school level. We know some of you are joining us via livestream and some might be watching this recording later. Just wanted to let you all know that currently we're limited on our platform to 500 people in the actual webinar, but we are working to increase this. So in the future, we'll be able to accommodate up to 1,000 people. So we're looking forward to that. So just wanted to let you know tonight, our panelists will go over a short presentation, and then we're going to be available to answer your questions. We'll attempt to get to as many of them as possible, but we're also capturing your questions, and that will help us inform our online FAQ. So please look at our Reimagining Education webpage on our website. You can link to that from the very top of our homepage for more information. Before we get started, I want to ask our panelists to introduce themselves. Joining our team of district administrators tonight and campus principals are two members of our Board of Trustees, Amber Feller and Cory Vessa. So Trustee Vessa, would you like to introduce yourself first?
Sure. I'm Cory Vessa. I was elected in November 2018. I have two students who attend schools in the district, one in 10th grade, going into 10th grade at Westwood High School, and another going into 7th grade at Grisham Middle School.
Thank you so much. Trustee Feller?
Hi, I'm Amber Feller, and I live in the Cedar Ridge community, and I have three children. Oh, no, I have two children now in the school district because I had a graduate in the class of 2020. Well, this is the first time I've had to say that. So I now have a class of 2021 senior, and I have a fifth grader at Blackland Prairie.
Thank you so much. Carla, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for this elementary town hall. My name is Carla Amaker. I currently serve as the Area Superintendent for our Round Rock Learning Community. I am entering my 17th year of working with our elementary schools in Round Rock, and so we've assembled a great team here tonight to talk to you about what we envision to be a really successful school year for our kids.
Jennifer Lucas, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Jennifer Lucas. I'm the principal at Gattis Elementary in the Cedar Ridge Learning Community.
Awesome. Alethea?
Hello, I am Alethea Britton, Principal of Double File Trail Elementary. I am proudly representing the Stony Point Learning Community.
Vicki, you're next on my little box here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Vicki Crane. I'm the proud principal at Cactus Ranch Elementary in the Round Rock Learning Community.
Sarah?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Nelson. I'm the principal at Purple Sage Elementary, and I am representing the Westwood Learning Community.
Brandy?
Hi, my name is Brandy Hafner. I'm the Director of Health Services for Round Rock ISD.
Jana?
I'm Janice Stowe. I'm the principal at El Sangland Elementary. This is my beginning of my 25th year in Round Rock ISD, and I proudly represent the McNeil Learning Community. They save the oldest person for last, you know, senior, senior status.
Mandy, does that make you the oldest?
Possibly. Hi, everyone. My name is Mandy Estes, and I have the honor of serving as the Chief of Teaching and Learning for Round Rock ISD.
And finally, I want to turn it over for a welcome to Dr. Steve Flores, our Superintendent of Schools. He'll then turn it over to Mandy for the presentation and just remind you that we'll be using the Q and A at the bottom of the Zoom screen there for questions once we get through the presentation. So Dr. Flores, would you like to welcome our guests?
Thank you so much, Jenny, and thank you for, thank you and your team for wonderful. This is our third virtual town hall, so thank you so much for that. Welcome and thank you for joining us. I'm Steve Flores, the proud Superintendent of Round Rock ISD. We're glad you're joining us tonight, whether you're on the webinar or watching the livestream or even a recorded version of this event later. Our purpose with these town halls is to bring you with our subject matter experts who have been working day in and day out for months to plan a safe reopening of schools for our students and staff to answer your questions and address concerns. As you all know by now, we'll be beginning the school year as scheduled on August 20th, but we will be 100% virtual for at least the first three weeks. We're very hopeful. We will be able to welcome students back to campus after that, but we'll also continue to offer a virtual option. Today's town hall will focus on what in-person instruction will look like at our elementary schools. We know how important face-to-face interaction is for students, particularly our youngest, and we need to balance that with the safety for all. So tonight, we'll be providing more information on what the experience will be for our students and for our parents. We have a great panel of experts, including some of the most wonderful elementary school principals in the entire, on the entire planet, who will give an overview and then answer your questions. Also joining us tonight, and you met them, trustees Amber Feller and Cory Vessa, and they will help explain their role and priorities as well as we all work on these challenges together, especially as a team of eight. You should have received an email earlier this month with a link to parent choice form asking if you prefer on-campus or at-home learning for your student once we open schools again. I understand that some of you are waiting to hear the information tonight before making that decision. Please know that you can access that link anytime and make or even change your choice. We asked for that information by August 6th for our planning purposes, but we will be flexible, and no choice you make now is binding. We want to do what's best for you and your child. So we have one more town hall scheduled this week. On Thursday, we'll be taking a look at what it looks like, what on-campus learning will look like at our middle and high school levels. So that, join us on Thursday as well. And before we get started, I want to announce we're also scheduling an additional town hall. This one that will focus on special education and special education issues. It will be held on Monday, August 3rd at 5:30 PM, and that information will be on our website and social media channels. Thank you again for your patience and support as we navigate these unprecedented circumstances. Please know that in everything we do, the health, safety, and wellbeing of our students and staff is our top priority. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mandy Estes, our Chief for Teaching and Learning. Take it away, Ms. Estes.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And could we start the slide presentation? So thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. As Dr. Flores said, our purpose is to help you better understand what the on-campus experience will look like and feel like for our students when they return in the fall. We know as parents that you are grappling with the choice of virtual or on-campus, and we want you to know that regardless of the choice that you make, we intend to serve your student very well. Tonight's town hall will focus on social distancing, safety aspects, as well as what classrooms will look like in this new world of COVID-19.
Mandy? There are people that are saying that there's no sound coming through the video, so I'm not sure if that's true all over the place. So just...
Okay. It is only for the livestream, Jennifer. We are working on it, but the folks on the webinar can hear, and this is being recorded, so we will be posting it.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Jennifer. So throughout this process, we've been guided by the principles that you see here on your screen. Of course, our mission overall is to provide an exemplary educational experience for our 51,000 students. But during this time of COVID, we know that we have to focus on prioritizing student and staff safety and wellbeing, focusing on equity, and also staying flexible. As many of you know, guidance coming from state and local and national authorities is ever shifting as the situation evolves. And so we have to remain responsive and nimble as new guidance comes out to us. Next slide. Thank you. So as we embarked on this new process of reimagining what our schools could look like in this whole new environment of COVID, we thought of Walt Disney and Imagineering. Walt Disney was never interested in what happened yesterday. He was always looking ahead, always challenging people to think constantly about how they could do things better, because what was done yesterday was never going to be good enough again. And as we, as we started this process of reimagining what our schools would look like, it was striking to all of us how much this resembled the Imagineering process that Disney Corporation uses. Imagineers within Disney Corporation are individuals who are placed on a team, and they combine creative imagination with technical know-how. And when you think about it, what we're doing with our schools in Round Rock as we reimagine is Imagineering. We're blending those high-quality instructional practices that we provide for our students with new technical know-how to produce an educational experience that is even better than before. I know, we all know that the craziness of COVID-19 is scary, and it feels like a stressful, bad dream. And it's definitely true that this past six months has been like none that I've ever experienced in my 31 years as an educator. But I also believe that truly, in this moment of history, we have an opportunity to reinvent education in a creative and innovative way that's never been done before and that's better than before. So in tonight's presentation, we're excited to share with you a glimpse of what on-campus learning will look like and feel like. And as Dr. Flores said, we have stellar campus leaders from throughout our district that we've gathered to walk you through what it will look like on their campuses and on other elementary campuses in the district. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Carla Amaker, Area Superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. I want us to think about what is about to happen in three phases. Beginning August 20th, as Dr. Flores referenced, all of our students are going to begin virtually. For that three-week period, all of our students will be learning online, and all of our teachers will be virtual teachers. Our homeroom classes for all of our elementary students will be created in that traditional manner, and students will be introduced to a whole team of teachers so that we'll be promoting familiarity across the grade level with all of those teachers. This is really important because going into this fall of 2020, although we're going to make every effort to keep kids with their same teacher, because of the flowing back and forth possibly happening between an online environment and an in-person environment, there may be times where they experience a different teacher. So initially, in this three weeks, they will have their homeroom teacher, but they will be introduced and be able to come familiar with the entire teaching team. Beginning on September 10th, those of you who choose to bring your child back to campus for on-campus instruction, we'll welcome your kids back into our buildings. During this time, interactions will be limited to within the classroom community, which will be quite smaller than we're traditionally thinking of a classroom of 22 to 1. These will be smaller-sized classrooms. In that classroom community, they will be staying together. They are not going to be interacting with other classrooms down the hall or other classrooms on the team. It's mostly going to be a tight family unit with limited access to other people in the school. During this time, they will have a dedicated in-person teacher when they come back to campus, because at this point, we'll know what everybody intends to do starting August 6th, and we can begin planning for some of our teachers to remain on-campus in-person teachers and some of our teachers to continue teaching virtually. As I mentioned earlier, teacher changes may occur, if we could go back because we have one more phase to talk through. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, those changes might occur during that transition between online teaching and coming back into our classrooms. Later down the road, and you know, we're all hoping that that's going to be sooner rather than later when we get great information about restrictions being able to be lifted across the state and across our nation. At that point, movement will increase on campus. We will be offering virtual learning all year, and so kids can stay virtual and will keep teaching on campus. And just know that as those class sizes might ebb and flow, again, there is the potential for teacher change. If at any point later on down the road, there is a need for us to cease in-campus instruction, on-campus instruction, we would go back and revert to what August 20th to September 10th looks like in an online environment. We're ready to move on to the next slide. So this is just to give you a little taste of if you're considering bringing your child back to us in person on September 10th. Both virtual and on-campus are going to be very compatible. We are leveraging a lot of the same practices and a new learning management system to help us keep things consistent as possible between virtual and on-campus learning. So both will be experiencing your typical elementary classroom meeting. Sometimes you refer to that as your circle time. That's an opportunity for kids to engage in conversation and dialogue, set the stage for the day, social-emotional learning. Our whole English Language Arts time, reading, writing, whole group, small group, interactive, all of our math lessons, our science and social studies experiences. Of course, we'll integrate our science and social studies. We will experience art, music, and PE in both situations. We'll have support services available in both situations. In the virtual environment, they'll have some, some opportunities to go into virtual support rooms, some choice workshops will provide some enrichment activities, and those class sizes will be larger. Our virtual teachers will be managing larger class sizes. If you choose to send your child to school for on-campus learning, they will have the ability to have in-person teacher instruction to complement everything happening in Schoology and in all of those subject areas. They will have in-person interactions within their classroom community, and so building community within the classroom is very important to us, and they will have a reduced class size. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Nelson to talk a little bit more about our new management system, Schoology.
Unmute, Sarah. So we will all be utilizing Schoology, and so all technology tools will be introduced to our teachers, our students, and our parents at a very comfortable pace as not to overwhelm anyone. All students, both virtual and on-campus, will be utilizing Schoology, which is a learning management system that will allow us to have one-stop shop for our students, our teachers, and our parents to communicate regarding assessments and student progress. Within Schoology, other technology tools will be housed as well. None of these tools are new to our system. However, they may be new to some campuses. Dreambox will be used for math, and iStation will be used for reading, and students will continue to receive instruction on state standards, have opportunities to practice their skills, and receive feedback at their level of understanding. Use of these responsive programs will occur daily during the school day, both on-campus, and they may also be assigned as homework. And they will allow our students to move seamlessly between on-campus and virtual learning as needed.
Hi, I'm Vicki Crane, Principal at Cactus Ranch, and I'll be talking about scheduling. As a principal, in a typical year, putting together a campus master schedule is challenging. This year, I keep referring to it as trying to put together a 1,000-piece puzzle. You can do it. It can happen, but it takes a lot of time and it takes a lot of patience. Here are some of the factors that we have to take into account as we're making a master schedule. First and foremost, we don't yet know which kids will be choosing virtual and which students will be choosing to be in-person. So the number of students that come will determine how many virtual teachers we need or how many in-person teachers we need. So we are limited right now in finalizing master schedules until we have that data. The other thing to think about is that some schools have unique needs that have to be considered. This could be IB. You could have be an arts integration campus, a dual-language campus, and all of these programs are going to affect the master schedule. Not all of our campuses have the same spaces. When you drive by a school, all of our elementary schools look differently. So principals need to figure out how to best utilize and navigate that safely. That will impact lunch or how specials may look. Master schedules are going to look different at every campus because every campus looks different. This past week, I had the pleasure of working with the wonderful Sarah Nelson, who's at Purple Sage, as we began the process of creating master schedules for our campuses. I'm working on a master schedule for one of the larger campuses in Round Rock ISD, but Sarah is dealing with a smaller campus, about half the size, but with a dual-language program. We're both using parameters set forth by the district. We're going to have a daily art, music, or PE time for kids. We're going to have a lunchtime and a duty-free lunch for teachers and a recess time, but our master schedules will look different. Both of the master schedules are going to be designed to meet the needs of our specific community. At this time, Alethea Britton at Double File Elementary will be talking more specifically about art, music, and PE.
Thank you. So I am discussing the specials component, specifically PE music and art. We can assure that all students are going to receive PE music and art when they return to campuses on September 10th. The typical rotation will not exist. So more specifically, we might have to provide the specials, PE music and art, in-person, or we might be using other formats such as video or live streaming. We'll be able to do so with classroom teachers' help as well as the help of interventionists and other support staff. But we can assure that we will definitely provide the 135 required minutes per week of physical movement for students. We'll do that in many different ways. We are still working on schedules. As you've heard already more than once today, the schedules are going to vary by campus. It depends heavily on the number of students that are returning to each campus and also the, the actual layout of the campus, the available spaces on each campus. Our biggest goal, though, is to limit the amount of teacher exposure to students and also the amount of exposure students have to different teachers. And I think we're ready for the next slide.
Let's go back one. I'm wondering if Jana might be having some technical difficulty.
I am here. I am here. Okay, so to wrap it up, that part that my colleagues have presented so far, what we want you to see is there are some differences when you come back to campus. The physical environment's going to be changed a little bit with some smaller class groupings, possibly the way your kids are sitting, a lot more processes and protocols in place for safety and health, hand sanitizing, you know, wearing masks, the way the, the way the kids sit in one direction and so forth. And that, you know, there will be limiting the number of adults and other groups of kids that they interact with in that initial phase. But what we want you to hear is that with all those limitations and what seem to be constraints at the beginning, is that this is going to be a very welcoming, nurturing environment. A lot of what you're used to having in school actually will still be part of our core purpose. We're going to be building relationships with kids. We're going to be helping support them in any way we can, you know, their social-emotional learning, their academic progress. And we have a lot of creative staff who are ready to do that. I guarantee you that all of the staff that we represent of the 34 elementary schools, all of them are ready to have your kids back, and we will be happy to see them, and we will, they'll know that we're happy to see them. We may not be, you know, hugging all over them the way we normally would, but we will be celebrating our kids. Some of the things we won't do that we have done in the past, at least initially, we won't have these large assemblies that maybe we've had celebration assemblies in the past at schools or school spirit assemblies, those kinds of large gatherings with groups of kids all in one spot. We will just have to avoid that at the beginning, but we will find other ways to celebrate your kids and celebrate their learning and their accomplishments and to still make this a very welcoming and nurturing environment for the kids. Whether you're learning at home or learning in school and campus, all of the instruction is going to be rigorous. All of the activities will be aligned to state standards. They're going to have all of the, a lot of the same experiences or, or types of lessons that they've had in the past. It's just going to be a little bit different format, and we'll just have to pay attention to the health and safety aspects first and then build from there.
I think Jennifer Lucas maybe is going to speak next.
I am. Good evening. So we're talking about in-person learning and kids coming back to the building. And like Jana said, we're super excited to have kids come back to see us. The teachers want to see kids. I know parents are concerned about their kids and safety as well as the safety and the health of our teachers. And so, you know, we'll follow all of the protocols with masks and those types of things. But when we have kids here in the building and in their classrooms, we want to make that like it's been in previous years. It will look different. We're going to have to be super creative. Kids can help out, and teachers can help out and be creative in creating those greetings. You know, teachers would stand at doors and give hugs or high-fives or handshakes when kids would come into the classrooms in previous years. And, and at this time, we're not going to be able to do that, but, but I think that they can be super creative in coming up with, with greetings within the classroom. And so kids will, can wear masks. You will social distance. We won't have as much, the, the physical contact of hugging kids is something that I'm going to miss and is going to be super, super hard for me, and I know is going to be hard for other principals and teachers as well. But for the safety of kids and safety of, of our teachers, you know, that's, that's going to be different. If a kid was upset, though, we're going to take care of them, and we're going to nurture them, and we're going to, we're, you know, we are really going to take care of kids in the classroom. But, but we want to make the classroom, when kids come back to school, have that sense of normalcy and coming back to a routine and a structure each day. Although the structures might look, you know, I mean, a little different, we are going to get back to teaching and having that classroom, and it's, it's not going to be, I think, maybe some perceptions. It was going to be kind of lockstep and, and things like that. And it's really, we want to create those warm, nurturing, and loving environments.
Okay. Well, thanks to all our panelists. We're going to dive in some of the questions now. We can, here we go, get back to where we can see everyone. So one of the first questions was about libraries, like how will we be able to, will kids be able to visit libraries or not, and how will we kind of meet that need?
Sure, I can take that one. Thank you for that question. Our librarians have been working with Amy Uselman, who's our Director of Library Services, to put together protocols for not only a curbside pickup for our learners who are learning virtually at home, but also a distribution of text within the library to students within the building. So our libraries will temporarily not be spaces in which students go and mingle and touch books and put books back up. We want to make sure that we don't create any unsafe situations inadvertently in our libraries. But students will still have access to check out books, to take them home with them, and then when they're returned, we'll make sure that they're sanitized and ready to go before they're issued to another student.
And I know there was a lot of talk about scheduling, and that's especially, it's challenging in a normal school year certainly now, but we did have a question of, can you tell us when we'll receive our official schedules?
To one of the principals? I'll jump in. You know, typically, you'll learn about your own child's class schedule, you know, when the child, when the child's teacher introduces themselves to you, right? So when you go back for Meet the Teacher Night, or some of our schools have welcome walks traditionally and things like that. This year, I've heard a lot of principal talk about how they will have teachers introduce themselves to their students, you know, whether it's through some sort of a forum like this, or whether it's a recorded video that they push out. But however they do it, you know, that's typically the first glance at, you know, what the day is, the exact day of your, of your class is going to look like. Because keep in mind, within the master schedule, every grade level on the team has a different schedule as well. So they'll, they'll get the school schedule pretty much at the same rate that they typically would in a normal school year. If you're an on-campus learner, it's not going to look drastically different than a traditional schedule. We are going to be leveraging some technology tools, but you're going to be in there with your classroom teacher as well and able to get in-person instruction that complements anything that we're doing in the virtual world. So I wouldn't expect any drastic changes to an in-person schedule.
Okay, so this one, one of our dual-language principals might want to jump in. Can you explain if and how the dual-language program will be affected?
I can, I can jump in. What we are...
We are really talking and communicating with all of the dual-language principals in our campus and there are a couple in each learning community. And so we're really taking lots of things into consideration. We will still be implementing the dual-language program both virtually and in person. And so it will continue to be delivered that way. We just may have to collaborate across campuses in some form or fashion to serve all of our students.
Another interesting question. Please, can you describe how new students, maybe from out of state, would be socialized into their new schools? I bet some of our principals have been thinking about that.
I don't mind jumping in and taking this one. So at the beginning, for the first three weeks when everybody is virtual, there's going to be an embedded social, emotional learning time in everybody's schedule. So that's where Carla addressed, you know, staff meetings, getting to know each other. A lot of our campuses start that way if we were in person. And so that's something that we're going to, you know, hold dear to our hearts and bring into that virtual setting. They'll introduce get-to-know-you games and fun icebreakers. Through Schoology, kiddos will have an interactive opportunity to introduce themselves that way as well. And so just like a teacher would go out of their way to make everybody feel welcomed and everybody feel seen and heard in an in-person classroom, we're going to make sure that those same things happen virtually as well.
Great. Ms. Estes, this one is probably for you. And of course, we don't know for certain the answer to this question, but one parent wants to know, when will parents have an idea of how many kids will be returning to in-person learning after the first three-week period?
Oh, yes, that's a great question. And I think that goes to the information that we are collecting through our Parent Choice surveys that we've sent out. And we know we are encouraging parents and families to make a choice by August 6th. But we also know flexibility is key during this time, that there may be some changes that occur in the family that necessitate a change in the learning environment for the student. So as those campuses then know how many students are coming back in person, those classes will be built and class sizes will be formed. It's very important to us, if at all possible, and we do think it is, to keep students attending the school that they're boundaried for. So at this time, we have no intent to move students from one school to another, but rather, we're going to manage the students within the schools that they're assigned to. So more to come on that one.
Thank you. And this question might have come in actually before the announcement that we are going to be having. I want to remind everyone, we will be having a town hall, a virtual town hall specifically on special ed to address special ed on Monday, August 3rd, also at 5:30. But I'll go ahead and ask this question in case some of our district administrators or campus principals want to jump in. How will dyslexia services and inclusion services work in the virtual classroom?
So in the virtual classroom, Jenny?
Yes, and I realized it was virtual as I was reading it. And several, yeah, and I think it's okay to go ahead and answer, but I'll just to remind our participants, we are focusing on on-campus. I've gotten lots of virtual questions. We'll try to sprinkle some in, but you can go back and watch the video from last week, last Wednesday's town hall. We spent about an hour and 45 minutes, I believe, in all with lots of information about our virtual learning.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. And we will delve more into all of those special education dyslexia matters on Monday. But essentially, students will participate in a group synchronously with a dyslexia teacher. So it will look very much like the experience on campus, but would be in a virtual format.
This attendee is asking for a little more clarification on, and I think you guys did a good job in the presentation, but how much interaction will the kiddos on-campus have with their teacher? There's been a little bit of confusion about how much of on-campus is still done through a virtual platform.
I can talk about that a little bit. I think, yes, a lot of parents were confused after the first go-round came about because we were still trying to formulate how we were going to launch both at-home and in-person learners simultaneously. So rightfully so, our wonderful teachers helped us, you know, poke some holes in our first iteration of that. And so what we've come up with is a much better plan, which will allow the classroom teachers who were teaching the in-person groups to interact more like they typically would. I mean, they're going to be talking with the kids, they're going to be interacting with the children, they're going to be using their humor and, you know, all the things that make a classroom fun. It's just going to be spread out a little bit more and they may not use the same kinds of tools or share supplies. But the in-person picture that people maybe first had was just an all-day-long in-school suspension or something. It's not going to look like that at all. Kids are going to go outside for recess just only with their own class at first and, you know, they're going to safely move around the school environment. So I want parents to feel a little bit more relaxed about that and especially for new kindergartners coming in. Really, our teachers are just so, just can't wait to get their hands on the kids. I'm more worried about making the teachers follow all the safety protocols than the kids. We're probably just going to like scoop them all up and try to grab them all in our arms as soon as they show up. I'm with Jennifer Lucas on that one. We do love our kids and they will know, they will know with us following the safety protocols at the same time, how thrilled we are to have them in our classrooms.
Thank you, Jana. That's really helpful.
Can I add to, can I add to what Jana said?
Absolutely.
Because students will still be utilizing the computerized systems that we're accessing virtually. So in the virtual setup with iStation and DreamBox and Schoology, during in-person class, just like we would normal, in a normal school situation, kids would access computer programs in a blended learning format within our classrooms. So at some points during the school day, kids will get on, if they're doing the in-person learning, kids will get on iStation or get on DreamBox and work through that. That helps teachers and it helps us inform our instruction and how they want to address kids' needs. But those can also be accessed from home. So just to clarify that and add to that.
Okay, great. Next question is, how will it work for a child who normally might get pulled out of class for a little extra reading or math help? How will that happen? Where will that happen?
What we envision is the use of all of our tools. So when we're having kids on campus, we do want to keep it as regular feeling as possible to the regular school year. We also need to make sure that we're not having some of our teachers who might be our intervention teachers or, you know, teachers might be pulling small groups, interacting with so many kids that there's a lot of crossover, you know, in the amount of children that they're seeing because then those children go back to their classroom after interacting with children in their small group, right? So in the beginning, we're really going to try to minimize that. We've talked a lot about, a lot of it will go back to creative scheduling, right? And looking at the staff that we have and if there's appropriate personnel that could be attached to a certain few classrooms. It might also be leveraging technology in that if those first three weeks of school, I've been in a virtual small group for extra support and that's going well, there's no reason that when I return on campus, I can't move to the classroom in the back and put on my headphones and participate in that small group and then go back and join my class again. So it may look a little bit different depending on, you know, like I said, the availability of staff and the child situation. But we really, whether your child's learning virtually or learning in person, they will have opportunities to engage in small group instruction with the specialist that they need access to.
Okay, and hopping back over to another special ed question, will kids in special ed be allowed to join their general ed peers for inclusion time?
Yes, that inclusion resource will be very similarly structured to how it has been before COVID-19. And if any of the principals want to expand on that, but the short answer is it will be very similar. Yes.
Okay. Brandy, this one's probably coming your way. Our Director of Health Services. This person is saying they do hope face masks are mandatory for those who want to do in-person school. So maybe you can kind of talk a little bit about what we're requiring there and asking if there would be daily temperature checks.
So we are not doing daily temperature checks. That's not recommended by the TEA. Of course, all of these things are subject to change. Our guidance has changed even since we created the imagining, reimagining education documents. So these things are changing all the time. Right now, we have our early childhood students, our kindergarten pre-K through second-grade students, wearing their face coverings when they are in hallways, transitioning on the buses, those kind of places, but not required in the classroom all the time. Of course, the teachers will be working with the students, trying to encourage students to wear them the whole time, but it would not be mandatory. It would, however, be mandatory for all students in grades 3 through 12 to wear them throughout the entire school day. Right now, TEA is defining face coverings as cloth masks or a face shield. I know there's a lot of controversy as far as that goes because TEA and the CDC do not align as far as that goes. CDC has recently updated their guidance and we're waiting for TEA to update there. So stay tuned for changes as far as that goes. We're trying to keep up with the changes because they're happening rapid fire. But yes, no daily temperature checks. That will be something that staff as well as families will have to take care on their own, making sure that you have self, that you're self-monitoring your students at home before you send them.
And this person had a part two that I could probably answer. They're asking if a family decides in-person, can they switch back to online? And the answer is yes. We've always said we want people to feel comfortable. Of course, the more we know as a district, the better we can plan. But particularly if you have chosen in-person, but for whatever reason, your family circumstances change, you feel like there's a greater risk than you could, which is why, as our principals have been describing, we're trying to make it where that switch back to virtual will be seamless for the student. Then we want to make sure that our parents have all the information they need before they make that decision. So I think we've kind of gone over this, but since it's a question, I'm going to go ahead and ask it because maybe we need to explain a little more. This question is, how will teachers be able to focus on the children in the classroom when they will be on the screen working with virtual children? Carla or maybe one of the principals, do you want to explain how that's, how we're structuring that?
Sure. So beginnings, September 10th, students will be assigned to either a virtual teacher or an on-campus teacher. And teachers will be focused on one or the other. And so if I'm in my classroom teaching, I'm in my classroom teaching. And virtual teachers will also be on-campus, teaching from their classrooms, but virtually. And so they'll be attending to their children who are at home. So we want the team to continue to collaborate and to continue to plan together and work together. And there needs to be opportunity for them to ebb and flow across the team to support one another in case of whether it might be an absence or just another need that comes up. And then we also know that we're going to have kids kind of transitioning between at-home and in-person, learning at school. And so it really is going to be a team effort, but on a day-in, day-out basis, an on-campus teacher is dedicated to her on-campus kids.
Thank you for clarifying that. And this one is another virtual question, but it's one that's bubbled up, so I think may be good to address. How much of the virtual teaching will be teacher-created versus district-created? Seems like the teachers know their students best and should be creating the lessons for them.
Yes, and I would completely agree with that. And this question goes back to last spring when we had to quickly shift on a dime all teachers and all students across the district. And so the district did provide, our instructional coaches put together instructional slide decks to load into Google Classroom. Teachers could personalize them, but we were really trying to maintain that consistent experience and get everyone accustomed to a virtual instructional environment. This fall will be totally different. All teacher-planned, all teacher-prepared, of course, instructional coaches and district staff are there still to support. And as many of you know, our aligned Round Rock curriculum is the backbone of all of that. It's the resources, it's the standards, it's the pacing. Teachers will go into the ARC, will look at the units coming up, and then they will plan the lessons.
This is more of a kind of big-picture question that I think every school superintendent wish she knew the answer to. So Dr. Flores, I'm going to put you on the spot. This parent's asking, will the entire school year be virtual? If COVID conditions change and no longer a risk, will students be able to go back to school in the traditional form? That's their quotes.
Well, again, that's a great question and that's something that we all, you know, have wonderings about throughout the state. I talked to superintendents in the Houston area, from Fort Worth area, Tarrant County. And what we have, again, back to our guiding principles, is a flexibility. And the great thing about it is we can offer, if it's to the point where we need to be virtual, but again, what I think's been stated over and over, and you can tell by just the excitement of the principals, they want the kids in the classroom. These are the principals. I think they're hearing from their teachers the same way. So again, I just commend the staff for the flexibility and the ability to shift so quickly. But our hope is to get back on September 10th and then be as consistent as possible and then move, as was stated earlier, we'll expand the capability once we get better and better, as our world gets better. And that's our hope that it gets better and that's everybody's hope. So again, I know that's kind of vague, but at the same time, just know that we're going to be as flexible as possible, wanting our students in the classroom as fast as possible when it's safe to do so for our students and staff. So, and again, I think, Mandy, the last question, I can expand a little bit because I've heard it a lot as well. I've received a lot of, please don't, let's get back to school, let's get our students in the classrooms because last spring was just not, it was crisis education. It wasn't our normal education delivery. Now with teacher-generated and all the campus-generated information with our aligned Round Rock curriculum, which makes Round Rock really one of the endies in the state with regards to how we have a very rigorous curriculum for our students. But as you can see also, it's not just about the rigor. Our principals are displaying that it's also about, you know, the relationships that go with that. So again, we're going to be as flexible as possible and as safe as possible. And there's even new information. I think that question right there, there was some information from the Attorney General, which I won't get into today, but that's what had my phone ringing. So I just need every parent to know that the phones are ringing, that what's happening is so fluid, that sometimes, I used to say that we're going to change by the day or by the week. Now it's almost by the hour and even by the minute. So with that, I know that's a long-about way of saying that we're going to be as flexible as possible, but keep in mind that safety of our students and staff is guiding principle number one. So we'll stay that way.
And the next question kind of piggybacks on that safety theme. Brandy, this one's for you. What happens if my child's teacher tests positive for COVID or if one of his classmates tests positive?
So we are, that guidance has changed recently as well. We're getting conflicting guidance from the two counties that we have our district reside within. So we have asked Williamson and Travis County to work together to help us develop some tools to help make those decisions. So I don't want to speak to that right now, not because I don't want to, but because I feel like I'd be giving inaccurate information. So stay tuned, there's more information coming from the counties that we, that the health authorities in the two counties that we live amongst and more information coming soon.
Yeah, and I think that there's another question that would probably be similar, but correct me if I'm wrong, we have more guidance, but it's what's the criteria for returning to a normal school day? What do the numbers have to look like and who sets these standards? And I think it's important for people to understand that our district does straddle two counties and three cities. And so do you want to just talk a little bit about how you're partnering with both of those counties?
Yes. Yes, we are, we, like Dr. Flores said, you know, the phone rings all day long and we're constant communication. So, you know, I get lots of feedback and lots of emails from families about their concerns. And just for you, to assure you, this is things that are on our mind. We're working on this all day long. And this is something that we are wanting, we've asked these two counties to work together to help us create an algorithm for our return. So we want, we of course want to come back to school with our kids and we want to come back to safe reopen and be able to have our kids in the school. But to do that, we would like to have some guidance from them as to when it's safe to open. So we're waiting for that to come. It's supposed to come in the next few days. And when that guidance comes out, I'm sure that will be shared with the community so you can see what we're seeing and how we're making our decisions.
And I just want to say again to our attendees, we're getting lots of questions, very specific questions about virtual instruction. And so if I could just encourage you to watch, and again, if you go to our website, there's a link to the ReImagining Education webpage at the very top of our homepage. And if you go there, you'll be able to scroll down, you'll see where we have our virtual town halls, you can watch recordings, you can look at the presentations. People are asking about schedules. We actually have those. You can link and see the schedules for students. So I just, I don't want to leave you hanging because we have the answers to these questions that we want to make sure we're honoring the folks who did tune in specifically for on-campus information now and we could answer that. And then this will be reported and available as well. We spend a lot of time on virtual and have lots of answers. We have a question about, will students be and have lots of answers. We have a question about, will students be eating in the cafeteria for lunch? What additional safety precautions will be implemented?
So this kind of goes back to the size of your campus and the needs of your school. So we have campuses at the elementary level who serve 1,000 kids, and it would not be feasible to run our kids through the cafeteria for lunch and have multiple classes intermixing in that space. But we do have some campuses that are quite a bit smaller and would be able to perhaps put two classes in the cafeteria at the same time, very much safely apart on other ends of the cafeteria. So it really goes back to space, size of the campus, and the principal working with the cafeteria manager and their COVID coordinator for their campus to make the best plan and the safest plan for their students.
Thank you, Carla. This is an interesting question. Will in-person classmates be able to interact, have lessons with virtual classmates? Has that been discussed?
So that is an option within the Schoology platform, and that's one reason that, a good reason to utilize it on-campus to some degree, is there's an opportunity for students to collaborate across that divide, the at-home and the on-campus learners. Now, keep in mind for elementary, the on-campus learners will be grouped with one teacher or teachers, and the virtual learners, the ones at home, will be with another teacher. So at elementary, that may be more limited, but certainly within their classmates, that's an option. And I'm sure the schools may find some other creative opportunities to connect the kids across both environments.
Thank you, Mandy. Here's a question that I know everybody on this panel wrestles with and is concerned about. How can the district reconcile their statement that equity is a focus when in-person classes will be much smaller than virtual with different teaching strategies? How are we making sure that we are, you know, maintaining that focus on equity with these two different delivery models?
Well, I'll jump in, and then if one of the principals wants to follow up. I think that goes to our very core, especially in elementary, which is to really individualize instruction, to make sure that we know the kids very well, we know their needs, and we respond in a way that meets each child's needs. So all of you parents who've been in our schools, you know that we assess kids at the beginning of the year. And while it may not be the very first thing that we do this year as we welcome our students back, very quickly, your teachers will get a handle on where students are with their learning, where their strengths are, where their gaps are. And then from there, they plan instruction. And so that will look very similar, in my opinion, in either environment. We'll be reaching out to each kid, making sure that we know the student, and then responding to their needs. And any of you that want to add on, I'd welcome you to do that from the campus.
I think one of the things that folks are thinking about if you have a large virtual class size. So when we are in that virtual setting, and if you have looked at the virtual schedules, there are times set aside for small groups for instruction and reading and math throughout the day. And so while a larger group, you're gonna log on in the mornings and have all of the students there participating and building that classroom community, no matter virtually or in-person, that's the focus, is we've got to build those relationships and build that classroom community. But when you, at the time, you're gonna schedule small group instruction. And so you'll really be able to focus on those small groups of students and get that personalized instruction at that point. So hopefully that clarifies that a little bit.
Thank you so much. Brandy, we had another question about a mask requirement. Would the district back off that requirement if the county or state orders soften that requirement?
I mean, that just depends. We take our guidance from them. That's not a rule that we made. So that's something that we would take those, I mean, if they change the guidance, I can see that we would change it as well. Please note that those mask guidance is for students that are developmentally able and capable to wear a mask. So when we're talking about students wearing masks all day long in grades three through 12, you know, there are some students who that developmentally is not appropriate. So you have some individual needs regarding face coverings. Those can be addressed on a case-by-case basis. And requests for accommodation should be submitted to the campus administration. But we are still waiting for that guidance to change. We're waiting.
That's very good context. I appreciate that. We had a question about what, will everyone who requested a Chromebook receive one? And we did, we did distribute, I think it was almost 13,000, Mandy, correct me if I'm wrong, Chromebooks. And we did ask, unless they were graduating senior students, to keep those. We are, we're making sure, we're actually getting other laptops, Chromebooks now ready and ordering. So the eventual goal will be one-to-one in Round Rock ISD. But as you can imagine, lots of districts are ordering Chromebooks right now. So it might be a little later in the fall, but we will be able to meet those needs. And in the meantime, we're asking families who do have access to their own devices, if they could please use those so that we can make sure we get them in the hands of the kids that need them most. Mandy, anything I left off or?
No, that's perfect. We do anticipate that we will be able to meet that need. However, if you have a laptop at home, if your child already has a Chromebook, Schoology will work just fine on, across many platforms. We'd love to have you bring that to the school. We'll help you onboard it. And then that's one more Chromebook that we have to issue to another student.
This question, and then we'll start wrapping up. See, and will they be staggered, drop-off, and dismissal schedules? How would that work for siblings in multiple grades if so?
I can address that one a little bit. And I think it's gonna be dependent totally on how many students we have coming. So I don't think we can answer that. I typically have 840 students at my campus. You know, if the majority of those said they're coming, yes, I would expect to have a staggered schedule because I can't safely get that many kids in my building and keep them apart. But if I have a much higher percentage choosing to be virtual, then I might be able to keep my regular time. So I think that's gonna be totally dependent on how many students sign up to be in-person.
And we had a question, wondering about would each school have some sort of a town hall? And I know all of our principals do an amazing job communicating in a variety of ways, whatever works best for your community. Do any of you want to address your either communication goals or what you plan to be doing to reach out to parents and making sure that you have that open line of communication?
I think, as Vicki was alluding to, depending on your campus, you might have to come up with some new processes for arrival and dismissal. The way you're gonna do parent night and welcome back to school events is gonna obviously be different, and a lot of it's gonna be virtual. So each principal and the teams within the schools right now are already thinking about ways that they can still open up their learning community, get their group back together in some form to kick off the year and push out all the information. So we'll use a variety of tools, all of us use Blackboard. You know, we send things out through the parent communication with, you know, some more newsletters or video announcements, you know, all of that. And we'll just continue to expand those ways that we reach out to our parent groups and using social media as well. I'm already working with my PTA, for example, so they can push out on the PTA webpage, some things we're gonna do to help get supplies picked up if they ordered pre-packed supplies, things like that. So each principal's on top of that, I guarantee you. So not really a town hall. We're not gonna just, you know, have a big Q&amp;A webinar, probably. But we will want to make sure that whatever we land on for our school, that all of that is communicated thoroughly to all of our parents and students before the first day.
Great. Thank you, Jana.
I'll piggyback on Jana, if I can, thinking about Schoology. I think there's lots of questions about Schoology from parents. And I can kind of see and envision our back-to-school night where we would typically have them meet the teacher. It would, of course, be a virtual thing, but it might be a virtual opportunity for the parents and the students to sit side by side, logged in on the computer to Schoology for them to practice prior to, you know, prior to school starting kinds of things. We will be getting access to Schoology very soon and learning more and more about it ourselves. But I think, I think that that's a lot of, were some concerns from the spring, where they had problems accessing it and logging on and logging off. So I think especially kindergartners and pre-kers coming in, it's gonna be critical and with all students to be able to have parents sit side by side with their kiddo to see that learning management system and what it's gonna look like and how they can view it and things like that. So I think that that will be an opportunity to help parents understand what tools we're gonna be using.
And I just want to add, we have teams that are already working on virtual opportunities to connect with families before the start of school, so that we help you navigate through Schoology, help you get to know the teacher. Certainly we'll have the opportunity to share those exciting and interesting things about your student that help them be a unique learner. And it's not to say either that we won't have the opportunity as principals to do coffee with the principal just virtually. So there's still opportunities to connect with principals and make sure questions are answered and everyone feels assured.
Great. Thanks so much. I want to give our trustees a chance. We're so happy they joined us. And we're gonna have at least one or two trustees joining us in our town halls from now on. But just maybe to reiterate the board's role in this, or just anything you wanted to share. Trustee Feller, would you like to go first?
Yeah. Thank you. First of all, before I get started, I have to say thank you to all of these wonderful people that are on screen talking. And I know you guys have, you ladies and Dr. Flores have given up so much of your heart and soul since March 13th. And you're tired and you're excited in the same heartbeat of, you want those babies back. And I say babies because we're talking about in-person for elementary. But you want them back on your campuses. And listening to all this, I got so excited thinking about it. It was like the traditional first day of school. And then I remembered, oh yeah, it's not like that, but we're gonna make it as much like home as we can. I also want to thank all the parents that are out there watching tonight and that have reached out and contacted the board over the last, you know, four months. It has been prolific, but that's great. Doing the best that we can to stay on top of it and respond and get your questions answered. And along those lines, I would just ask, please be flexible and patient with us, because sometimes we have a meeting and then the TEA or the state or CDC changes their guidelines the very next day and we have to redo the work that we did the night before. I also want to say thank you to our wonderful ASL interpreters that we have here tonight. I absolutely love watching it. I think it's a beautiful language. So I just wanted to shout that out as well. And finally, I know if you're watching this, some of you have already decided you want in-person learning. Some of you are not decided. Some of you have already decided virtual, but you wanted to hear what they had to say. I want to say there's no wrong decision. Everybody's family is different. Everybody's situation is different. And I just hope that we extend grace to whoever chooses whatever option they do, because everybody's making it for their own very personal reasons. So thank you to everybody out there. It is, we as a board have lost sleep thinking about how we're going to make sure that these kids are prepared and don't slide back. And we as a board are committed to supporting the district any way that we can, financially, policies and procedures, whatever it is we need to do as a board as we move forward. So I just want to say thank you for everybody's attention today and continuing to work for the best interests of our kiddos.
Thank you. Trustee Vessa?
Yeah, Amber did a great job. Thank you, Amber, for being, doing such a great job. Thanking everyone, because we really can't thank our staff enough for all their hard work. And we know it's been just a roller coaster. And I do want to answer one thing that Jenny had brought up was like, what is the role of the board and what is the role of the superintendent here? And the superintendent's job is to plan for the day-to-day activities. What is school gonna look like? How are we gonna staff? All those things, all these questions tonight, that that's his role. It's his responsibility to address those concerns and answer those questions and put a plan into place. But it's the board's role to have oversight to determine whether he is doing a good job doing that. And last night, we had a superintendent evaluation and a board self-evaluation, and that was our goal, to give him feedback. And so I just wanted to clarify, you know, the board is not making these decisions on a day-to-day basis. That's Dr. Flores, that's his team. But we are here to listen to your feedback. We are here to help Dr. Flores and give him feedback. And ultimately, to hold Dr. Flores accountable to achieving the high standard that we all expect of our district. And so I just wanted to clarify that. And I just want to echo too, again, what Amber said. Thank you so much for coming and watching tonight. And it is a hard decision. And it's a personal decision. So but we're gonna do our best in whatever learning environment to provide the highest quality education possible, given these circumstances.
Thank you so much. And we will be posting this video on our website. So if you want to share it with any of your friends or that you know might want to see it, or if you joined us late and want to see the whole thing, and we are capturing the questions. I know we didn't get to all of them, but we are using those to make sure that our FAQ online is answering the questions that you all have. And we'll be happy to do this again, maybe drilling down in some more specific topics. Again, we have another Thursday night will be our next focusing on secondary. I'm sure some of you have some secondary kiddos as well as elementary. And then Monday night for special education. So thanks again for joining us. Have a good night.